Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved.
First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then, decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So, pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then, all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the consent agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, "I'm John Doe, speaking on Item 5, and I agree with approving the contract." Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandiegocounty.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the "Register" button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem. Just pick the "in-person" option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit "Register," and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So, you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off-topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda item's recommendations because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to Room 302 or the fourth-floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So, let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
I will now call the June 25, 2025 San Diego County Board of Supervisors Land Use Meeting, Flood Control District Meeting, Fire Protection District Meeting, and Sanitation District Meeting to order. Ryan, please call the roll.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Supervisor Anderson?
Here.
Supervisor Montgomery-Stefan?
Here.
Supervisor Desmond?
Here.
And Vice Chair Lawson-Reimer?
Here. We now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within our jurisdiction, but not on our meeting agenda. The only action we may take is a referral to the CAO. Under the Board's rules, speakers can speak once per meeting for non-agenda public comment, either yesterday or today, but not both sessions. And you may select which session to address at your own convenience. The facility at the meeting, we will have five non-agenda speakers in person and five by phone. The remainder will be heard at the close of today's session. In accordance with Board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of the agenda, for any discussion items with 10 or more speakers, individuals have one minute to share their opinion. According to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English-speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the amount of time for their comments. And a final reminder, according to the Board's Rules and Procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stump feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be given one warning. After that one warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Ryan, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson-Reimer. We do have nine told to request to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, five individuals in person for requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows and tell it's your turn to speak at the podium. You'll then have two minutes to address the Board, and please begin by stating your name for the record. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, Legally Audra, Caesar Javier, and Parita Javier.
I'm wondering if I need a translator for you guys because I can explain things to you, but I can't make you understand them. So, I don't know if we can look into possibly you guys finding a translator that helps you understand what's being said. And, you know, I had some other families that wanted to come in to talk to you guys. Unfortunately, these people have severe PTSD from what they have endured from the county and the treatment that they've had. One of the mothers has an autistic son who is in foster care, and he's actually quite bruised up. And whenever that's being brought to the attention of the caseworkers, they don't find it very important or dire to address it. And that's unfortunate because if it was in the mother's care and he was leaving a visit and he had bruising, like, all of his legs are completely bruised up. Even his side has a bruise. And, you know, parents are, you know, retaliated against in ways that they shouldn't be because they can't even protect their children when they're in your care. And that's really unfortunate because that should be something that's addressed. I mean, there's other parents. One of these mothers, her children were adopted out, and they took them to Canada. So, there's a lot of things that you guys need to be addressing, and I'm hoping that as more and more of these families come in as I'm trying to get them outside of their PTSD so they could talk to you guys, that you'll come and talk to them and try and mitigate the issues that they're having because their children want to go home. They want their children to be home. And it's, like I said, it's a business to keep them separated, and that's what's so unfortunate. So, I appreciate you, Monica, and I hope that as they continue to come, we can address it. So, thanks.
Caesar Javier, Parita Javier?
Good morning. I'm Parita. Ceramic manufacturing and kiln operation located, constructed, and operated in a single-family residential zone. Neighborhood is Hazardous Home Business within D9, City of San Diego, D4 of Country Air Pollution Control District. Is failing to address the community air quality problems. They come to investigate many times, but cannot enter the site. They could only do olfactory sensing and cannot do the scientific reading. Director Paula Forbes, in charge of permit, declared a nuisance case, period. Chair Governing Board declare nothing, knowing nothing about solution of our concern. The vintage rule of 1979 was revised only to delete the word "wood" as fuel. The Rule 11 Exem 20, industrial manufacturing business remain, including ceramic kiln fueled with gas or electric. This means the owner can locate, construct, and operate anywhere, anytime since 1984 to date to be received the city treasurer's business tax permit.
Thank you.
Dilophol Caesar Javier, victim to toxicity. Hey, guys. Our future. These are the students of Supervisor Montgomery-Stefan. Mom, this is a problem that could easily be solved. It's just a matter of telling Director Forbes, "Stop your business. Do the rightful thing for our San Diegans. Let them breathe clean air. Your rules are vintage. When people wear scarves and houses are spread." Today is different. We are densely sheltered. Look around at our downtown. Look around at our city political jurisdiction. Mom, Steph, this is your city you left. You left it on those people who had that political virus coming from you. I hope not. Councilor Rivera, the representative to the Air Pollution Control District absentee. The mayor with the Mona Lisa smile did nothing. Sit there, smile, do nothing. For the first time, we met him there for several letters requesting in-person. What was his response? He shook, I shook hand and said, "This is intellectual combat. We need your help." And the response was, "Nice meeting you, Mr. Javier." That is not the solution. We need to approve the course. Rule 11, Mom, Reimer. My shouting is not to demean you, but this is the outcome of that harm. You were there with the baby.
Thank you. Your time is up. I will call forward the final two speakers, Michael Brando and Shereen.
Michael?
They don't know what the fuck they're doing. You understand that? They don't know what the fuck they're doing. You understand that? They don't know what the fuck they're doing. They don't know what the fuck they're doing.
I want to be clear. I'm no fan of Donald Trump. I wasn't a fan of Joe Biden because a lot of us realize all of this is a charade. But why do I play that? Yesterday, there was a disruption in the room here, and it was largely manufactured by Tara and Claudia. Claudia Silva, the county council, went berserk again, saying things that are against the Constitution for the United States of America, saying that people can't say things that are impertinent, and that means an interpretation of showing proper respect or being rude or something that's irrelevant. And people don't really have the opportunity to express themselves clearly when they're only given 60 seconds to speak at this podium. I want to echo something else that Consuelo said yesterday. During those manufactured staged events that got people all riled up, where people came out of the woodworks and marched against the situation with the border, I want to echo again how ironic it is that the very same people that were out marching and carrying on like Sean Elo Rivera does, where were they when the bioweapon serum injections, the COVID-19 injection was being rolled out? See, both sides play for the same team. In regards to the shot that's taking down your health, Tara, both Trump and Biden promoted that, and all of you did too. The good news, people are waking up, and we're creating a brand-new world without you. How good can it get?
Thank you. And Shereen will now move on to our phone callers. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. And we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Hi. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'd like to highlight a troubling contrast between how the county is approaching affordable housing and how it's approaching cannabis. The Board has repeatedly acknowledged the urgent need for affordable housing in our region, especially in the unincorporated areas where working families, seniors, and veterans are struggling to find stable places to live. Yet, when we look at the actual investment, affordable housing programs are often underfunded, under-prioritized, and delayed by bureaucracy. Meanwhile, millions of dollars have been fast-tracked for cannabis business development, including a $2.4 million contract for a program that benefits a narrow group of applicants, none of whom are even based in unincorporated communities. That's public money going to private consultants, not to local families who need homes. If this Board is serious about equity, then the focus should be on basic human needs, shelter, safety, and stability, not subsidizing marijuana storefronts in areas that didn't ask for them. We've seen rural communities pass over again and again when it comes to housing infrastructure. Yet, they're expected to absorb the impacts of cannabis operations with little support or enforcement. Instead of pushing controversial cannabis projects, why not redirect those funds and efforts toward expanding affordable housing grants, streamlining permitting for new homes, and investing in infrastructure that serves entire communities, not just a commercial interest? Please choose the no-project alternative and start putting real community needs ahead of political experiments. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to our next caller.
Board of Supervisors, my name is Dora Fahim, president and founder of Los Angeles Alliance for Animals. I speak today with pride and conviction to say no to the endless failures of enforcement of animal cruelty laws in San Diego County. No to Director Von Maurice, which Public Safety Group hired, even though he was investigated by the grand jury, who I allege breaks the law daily with no one holding him accountable. No to Supervisor Tara Larson-Reimer, who is complicit in the death, suffering neglect of the horses on Artesian Road, where there has been countless deaths due to neglect, yet she still says one death is too much. No to Deputy District Attorney Eric Bodnar, who I allege has allowed the suffering of the horses dying a slow and painful death. I want to make sure that's on record. No to Public Safety Group, who I allege is lying, gaslighting the issues of VAS to this Board that everything is okay when in fact, everything is falling apart. No to District Attorney Summer Steffen, who made the statement this past week, "I am the voice of animals," when she has single-handedly have taken away the voice of animals by allowing alleged criminals to continue criminal acts on animals over and over and over again. A 21-year-old study indicated that 70% of animal abusers later committed other crimes, and notably, all individuals who engage in sexual homicides had a history of animal abuse. This Board must recognize, this is not about animals. This is about ensuring that criminals are held accountable to the highest extent of the law, taken off our streets, and rehabilitated. But this county is failing at it miserably. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go to our next speaker.
Hello, good morning. This is Markless Plaza. I wanted to mention how, in my time in participating in public comment here at the county and at the city, and comparing the technology usage on how one participates, other than in person, which I do like a lot. Definitely, there can be some changes to the technology structure because currently, it seems for the county, it's almost like a two-part iPhone, and also paying attention, you know, have internet access to be able to really even request to speak because just calling in doesn't seem to be enough. Anyway, but the city uses Zoom, which is neat in itself. I didn't get on the Zoom bandwagon when everyone did during COVID. So, I turned Zoom late. But, you know, I'm all for public participation in government because it just helps everyone in all areas of the county, to include the unincorporated. And I don't live there, but I promise I think about it. And then Supervisor Desmond, during the budget. Okay, I remember you had mentioned those two measures that you had concerns about. I think it was 31, 32. I need to watch the video again, but it's still in the brain. So, I'm aware of it. I just don't know what you're speaking to specifically. Okay, thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Yeah, Andrew Lawson. I'm a member of the Spring Valley Community Planning Group, acting on my own behalf. And the members of the community, though. Although this is non-agenda item, so I'm getting pretty tired of hearing people tell you people what to do when you guys aren't listening. Article 1, Section 3A of the California Constitution, which I'm convinced that none of you have actually read, states that these people have a right to instruct you on what to do. Yet, every single week, every single time you guys have a meeting, somebody's there telling you what's wrong with our system, and nothing is done. But you guys can complain about Donald Trump who's only been in office for the last five months. Yeah, good job on your part, guys. I yield.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson-Reimer, that concludes the request. And Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a closed session report out from yesterday. Good morning. The Board of Supervisors met in closed session on June 24, 2025, from 4:01 PM to 4:50 PM. All four supervisors were present. The board took the following reportable action. On Item 13C, XHR Carlsbad LLC versus County of San Diego, by a vote of three to one, with Supervisor Jim Desmond voting nay, the board authorized county council to appeal a decision by the Superior Court in a property tax refund action. End of report. Thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, statements of proceedings for the concurrent special district meetings. Flood Control District meeting of May 20th, San Diego County Fire Protection meeting of May 6, and Sanitation District, May 20th. Is our motion approval minutes? Okay, I'm happy to second. We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Please call the vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present in voting night?
Okay, great. We now proceed with the formation of the consent agenda, items two through four for today's meeting. All items on the consent agenda are routine and will be acted upon with one motion. Individuals will be able to comment on the consent agenda after the supervisors pull the items they would like for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion or have comments on items on the consent agenda? No? Joel? Sorry, Superintendent Anderson?
Nothing to pull and no comments. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer. We do have six total requests to speak on items on the consent agenda, two individuals in person and four requesting to speak by phone. Again, for any individual that requested to speak on the items on the consent agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. Go ahead and begin with our in-person speakers. Again, as your name is called, please come forward. You'll then have two minutes to address the board. Please state your name for the record. Also, when speaking, please identify which items on the consent agenda you're speaking about. I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra and Cesar Javier.
My person uses the name Audra, three and four. So with the O-Tai, you know, business district or whatnot, how cool is it for that tunnel that was just recently found, right? There's like hundreds of them in that area. And it's interesting because, I mean, it wasn't finished, so it's like, darn it. But, you know, with the new O-Tai Mesa East Port of Entry, because they seem to like to do them by the ports, and it's like, since there's going to be construction there, I'm sure there's going to be, you know, hundreds more tunnels that are going to be popping up. That's okay, because we do like to do commerce with Mexico, right? So it's like, as long as they can just keep that business coming and going, they don't have to worry about the, you know, construction impeding their ability to do that. And then I was thinking, with the Tijuana River Valley, why not hire some of these people to dig a tunnel and put it, send it right back to Mexico? I mean, I don't know. I figure if you catch these people doing it, you could just tell them to go the opposite way, and then we could just direct it right back into their neighborhoods and see if actually, at that point, they may want to do something about it. But who knows? Maybe not, because I don't know that that's their usual, you know, things that they put through those tunnels to, you know, make money off of it. But that's okay. We'll just send, we could just send the $650 million their way instead of putting it into the treatment plant. I feel like that would be a good idea. And yeah, I'm just wondering, do you guys not care about tunnels that come from Mexico? Because they tend to be in the warehouses in O-Tai. So are those warehouses some of the ones that are on this property? Do you guys know? Do you care? Or do you profit off of what's coming? Because there's probably humans and drugs, maybe guns too. I don't know. We actually sell them our guns, so that kind of would be the opposite.
Thank you. Not seeing Caesar in the chamber. We'll go ahead and go to our callers. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Ann Riddle. I called in to address Item 4 on the consent calendar. It's our reoccurring emergency proclamation regarding the sewage situation between the United States and Mexico. Yesterday, when you looked at some ideas, and I see that there was a UT article this morning about it as well, regarding solutions for this ongoing problem for the people who live in that area, I have to admit, I was really stunned by the opening paragraph of the staff report that said and recognized the problems it is for these people and actually that live down there, and that you actually gave a wonderful description in Item 4 about how compromised their health is. But you mentioned in that statement that the Board of Supervisors couldn't serve everybody's needs. And I have to admit that I'm startled and stunned and unhappy about that statement. We do recognize that health is our most priceless possession, and every cent that we have available to us should be spent on ensuring residents of our county have good health, or as much access to it as humanly possible. The single number one issue behind homelessness or any crisis in people's life is the interruption of good mental and physical health. And not to realize that at this stage of the county's budget seems unfortunate, and how we choose to spend money has to be devoted to the good health of all residents of the county. And speaking as someone who lives in the back country, I think that's why we're so appalled that the county would even consider bringing more marijuana storefronts out there. These products are smoked and vaped. Do we not understand at this stage of the game, the role that smoking and vaping plays in poor health? How?
Thank you. Your time is up. Go to our next speaker.
Hey, truth, let's talk about the irony of Items 3 and 4. Item 3 is going to allegedly help a private business owner paying $645,000 to build San Praviva Road. It's a live forever, but who or better what won't live forever? This item says economic growth and buy national trade by providing additional access to the new plant, O-Tai Port of Entry into Mexico. Then there's the hypocritical, hypocritical, Item 4, continuing a declaration of urgency over Mexico sewage that's been allowed to pollute our country for 90 years. So which is the priority? Will the residents of Imperial Beach San Praviva? Because it sounds like they're continuing to be steamrolled by corporate interests and cartel political beneficiaries. Business trade money as usual. Remember when corrupt Nato Fletcher got a $500,000 donation from a so-called Mexican businessman? How about when Baja Becky Butros told Imperial Beach that her boss lives in Coronado, where Americans can't even afford to live? The only reason San Praviva Road is going to be bought and built is to benefit those doing business in Mexico at the expense of Americans living in or near Imperial Beach. This future sandag, O-Tai Mesa East border crossing will increase Maquiladoras and housing development in Tijuana, which means even more sewage. Plus, Mexico will begin 50% of our toll money from the crossing to incentivize all the toxic things they subject our people to. Sewage, trash, cartel, drugs, tunnels, illegal immigration, smuggling, trafficking, et cetera. Item 3 is a free path for Mexico to get billions to continue to keep making Americans sick and dead. See, they're saying you're fighting the sewage crisis, like what Paloma Girei does, whining and complaining with fake sewage action plans? And then there's actually giving Mexico a financial incentive to stop their environmental terrorism. It's time to pick a side. Is it an emergency or not? Will you enable Mexico or not? Only Jim has taken a stand on this issue of environmental degradation, human health, and national security. Thank you for that. That is a deserved thing.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer, not seeing any other callers called in, that concludes public comment on the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Montgomery Stapp. Please vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present in voting night?
Okay, we now begin with our discussion items. All related items, as indicated in the agenda, will be taken together. So this includes Item 6, Fire Protection 1, which will be taken together. Again, 6 and Protection 1 will be taken together. Item 8, Flood Control 1 and Fire Protection 2 will be taken together, and Item 9 and Sanitation District 1 will be taken together. So again, we will do Item 5, then Item 6 and FP 1, then we'll do Item 7, then we do Item 8, Flood Control 1 and FP 2, then Item 9 and Sanitation 1, and then Item 10. Okay? So we can go ahead. For Item 5, we'll begin with public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer. We have six total requests to speak, two individuals in person, four requesting to speak by phone. Like to note for the record, we did not receive any ecomments on this item. For any individuals that request to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now, with the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. Like to invite forward again allegedly Audra and Cesar Javier. You have two minutes to address the board.
My person uses the name Audra. So the whole point here is for not to have us driving. That's what's coming down the pipe. So I just feel like, why do we waste time and incrementally slow down the speed limit? If we just rip the Band-Aid off and go to a walking speed, people will get out of their cars, because they're going to go, it's faster to walk and/or bike. But I feel like when we just really drag it out and make it seem like this is for safety, you know, I mean, you're not going to get your revenue necessarily from giving people speeding tickets, right? Because there's always money to be made off of whatever you guys do on all sides of it. So yeah, I just feel like you're really, you know, kind of just like twisting the knife when we do it slowly like this. You might as well just, I mean, pull the knife out, you know what I mean, of people's backs that you guys have put in there over decades of, you know, pretending like we're doing stuff that's actually good for people, and this is the United Nations plan. You guys are doing a good job implementing it. But I just, why wait? Why wait until, you know, a couple of years from now, when, you know, more stuff comes down, like our road usage charge? Might as well just bring that in too, and just make it like $1,000 to drive from here to the end of the road, and then you can just take people's cars, and you guys will get money for that, because you could sell them, or just put them in a landfill, who knows? And then, you know, yeah, I just, I really feel like we need to stop wasting time and really get to, I mean, because if we're trying to save the planet here, I feel like taking our sweet time on this is really going to, you know, harm the planet even more, and we can't have that. But we can't have people suffering. That's something that we do encourage. So good on you guys.
All right. Not seeing Caesar in the board chamber, and then not seeing any callers called in. Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer, that's going to conclude public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments from my colleagues?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Anderson. Please vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present in voting night?
Okay, thank you very much. We now move on to discussion Item 6 and Fire Protection 1. Notice public hearing, public hearing to confirm fiscal year '25 to '26 levies for community facilities districts and related SECO exemption. We now begin with public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer. We again have six total requests to speak, two individuals in person, four requesting to speak by phone. Like to note for the record, again, didn't receive any ecomments. Like to invite forward Audra and Cesar Javier. You have two minutes to address the board.
It's allegedly.
Allegedly.
Yes, there you go. You're good. Yeah, my person uses the name Audra, so, you know, here we're charging people more. It's so sad, because it's like, there should never be something where, you know, if you can't pay a fee that the government puts down the pipe to you, that you're going to lose your home. It's really sad to see, because it's like, you guys, I don't, I don't know how much money, like, what would be enough money for you guys? Because you take, you know, most of people's pay, they work real hard, and then they have to just like hand it over to you guys on a silver platter, hoping, I mean, people are, some people are glad that we pay taxes, because they're like, this goes to the roads and stuff. What? No, it doesn't. I mean, look at the roads. Why would they want to fix the roads if we're not supposed to drive? You know what I mean? And if you want to get people out of the unincorporated area, I don't even know why we have some kind of fire protection plan. Let's just let it burn down, right? And then people will just come to the city, and we can just build high-rise. I mean, haven't you seen the stuff in other countries where it's like, oh my gosh, it's like 50 million stories high, and there's like everybody in that community, but there's like stuff in there. They don't even have to leave. You know what I mean? It's cool, there's like a shopping mall, you know, grocery store, probably an amusement park. So I feel like if you guys start doing stuff like that for our 15-minute little zones, people are going to might enjoy it. Like, if you make it like an amusement park, people probably won't want to leave. But, I mean, the way you guys are doing it, they're going to feel like a slave, and you can't really have them feel that way, because that would just be letting the cat out of the bag. But yeah, until you guys want to do some kind of fire plan, I don't think you should be charging people more money. You should be making sure that there's some kind of town halls and stuff, so people know how to get out and in evacuation, and quit doing all of your complete community, complete streets crap, and putting roundabouts, making it really difficult for people to leave. But that is the plan. So you're doing good.
Thank you. Not seeing Caesar here in person, or any callers called in. Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments from my colleagues?
I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Montgomery Stapp. I'm happy to second. Okay, please vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present in voting night?
Okay, we now move on to Item 7. Notice public hearing to confirm fiscal year '25, '26 levies in the San Diego County Street Lighting District, and landscape means district zones 1, Branch of San Diego and 2, Just Martin Park and related SECO exemption.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer. We do have seven total requests to speak, two individuals in person, five requesting to speak, five phone. Also, like to note for the record, we did not receive any ecomments on this item. Again, like to invite forward allegedly Audra. You will have two minutes to address the board. And Cesar Javier, if he's in the chamber.
I feel like I'm the only one speaking today. How crazy is that? It's like, did you guys think you were going to be hanging out with me? No, you were hoping not. You're like, it's a nightmare. Yeah, this is interesting. So as we're going into our digital prison, our surveillance capita, right, with all of these people that came in, it's like, what a great time to bring in AI and a digital, you know, surveillance state, smart city type of things. And so with these streetlights, right, because light transmits data, it's called Li-Fi. I should look it up. It's actually faster than Wi-Fi. You can put lights all over the place and transmit data like no one's business. Maybe that's how we can start to travel. Do you guys think that would be a way to almost like be teleporting people from one spot to the next? I feel like that would be greenhouse gas effective, but it depends on, you know, like, who knows? But yeah, so anything to do with the lights that are coming in that are using LED, you guys need to do some research or bring in people that actually do and see the health effects of all of this technology that is coming to the people. And you want to raise their property taxes or whatever, 3%, which, again, how many homes are you guys going to take this year? Probably a lot. Probably, because I mean, people are having some really hard times. You guys keep hiking up those taxes and levies and fees and anything you can, but at least you guys will have your home, right? Maybe people can come and camp out on your front yard and see if, I don't know, I mean, we don't really care if people like enter our homes or cross borders, right? So if somebody just went in your home and wanted to take it, is that cool? Or is that, is that weird, right? That would be weird if somebody did that, and they just said, get out, I'm going to take over your home. But we let it happen on the border and call it seeking asylum. So I don't know, I guess people will just have to tell you that's what they're doing.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. Here a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I actually was in the queue for Item 6 and not 7, so if I could just take a few minutes to share my thoughts on Item 6 regarding the public hearing to confirm levies for the community facility districts. You mentioned in the staff report the items that the community facilities district fees create for us out here in the back country, and I wanted to highlight one of them. In your list, you mentioned libraries. Libraries at the city of San Diego, if you've been reading the UT, has been really controversial as people want them open seven days a week, all hours. And... And in terms of equity, this is probably one of the greatest gifts of equity, to have access to our libraries every day. The county libraries are also closed, like Sunday and Monday, which were kind of the controversy with the City of San Diego, they were going to close it Sunday and Monday. So, I'd like to respectfully suggest, if we're looking at equitable ways to serve the residents of this county, that you open the libraries seven days a week and that's how you spend your money. This would be a gift for people to have the information that's available at the library, the help that those librarians have provided to our families, particularly our children. If you want a better educated, a more successful population that exercises more sustainability in their lives and self-sufficiency, let's start with opening those libraries seven days a week. That would be a commitment extraordinary. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
Hey, asshole, why did you stop me from talking yesterday? Curiosity, why couldn't I continue talking on the remaining items? I want to know why you guys prevented me from talking without breaking any rules. I didn't call you guys a fucking cunt, which I'm more than happy to do now because you guys stopped me from talking. I want to know. Or from this point forward, I'm just going to refer to you as the fucking cunt of San Diego, if you don't want to answer that question. Is that how you want me to refer to you? As a fucking cunt of San Diego?
Could you please pause the speaker's time? This is your first warning. You are both using profane and abusive language and you are off topic. So, you know, regardless, you need to speak to the item and please do so in a way that's respectful of the chamber.
Why did you prevent me from talking, you bitch? Why did you prevent me from talking, you bitch?
That's your second warning. You can go ahead and forfeit the speaker's time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
I am waiting to speak now on item seven. I was in queue for non-agenda public comment, but I wasn't recognized. And now I'm waiting for item seven. Is this item seven?
Correct. This is item seven. And our apologies for not recognizing you. We have our team looking into it with our vendor.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Andrew. I wanted to talk about the environment. So, the county's marijuana program is disingenuously titled Cannabis Environmental Impact Review. However, it did a very poor job of reviewing because it was totally outdated even when it came out and it's much worse now. The county staff needs to beware of what has happened in the industry, both economically and the environment, as it has continued to be allowed to stay in place. So, Smart Pushes to Marijuana has put out a great report. It would be nice if the county staff read it. About marijuana production is nearly four times more energy intensive than coal or oil production. And one joint represents 1.5 kilograms of CO2 emissions, the same as a 100-watt light bulb for 25 hours. And growing one kilogram of marijuana indoors releases 4.6 metric tons of CO2 comparable to a passenger car over a year. Marijuana needs way more water than other crops and 90% of illegal grow sites in California contain lethal, controlled, or banned pesticides. It shouldn't be a surprise to anyone that people willing to break the law and grow marijuana illegally in states that have a permissive legal regime would also be willing to flout the laws that protect the environment and the health of the people. This is a wrong-headed approach and waste of your time, waste of people's, of taxpayer money, waste of staff money, and you're supporting an industry that is not providing any benefits to residents. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
This is Paul LaBold. I guess you didn't call on me last time, so I'll just give you my whole speech. Board letter says what this is about. Board policy B29 directs departments to recover the full cost of services provided to agencies or individuals. There is no projected unrecovered cost. So, this is about cost recovery more than taking into account the individual house evaluations or ability to pay. That is why I do not support these tax levies. For instance, in the chart which details the tax on each house along with the speculators, which should really be confidential, the same charges applied to $1 million house and a $6606,000 house, even within the same land use class. And a different charge is applied to a $658,000 house, but the other houses seem to play or pay a flat rate. And this isn't equitable at all. And, yeah, I agree with Audra, you know, you shouldn't be in the business of raising taxes so that people have to abandon or get kicked out of their houses for non-payment. I mean, it's ridiculous. And, you know, it looks like a good levy or fee raise might paper that half basketball court at Just Martin Park, but thanks to the landscape maintenance district and the street lighting district for holding off on a P increase in this time of economic uncertainty. And by the way, I'm glad that the other levy.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Vice Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments from my colleagues?
Move to approve.
A motion by Supervisor Desmond and a second by Supervisor Anderson. Please vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present voting aye.
Thank you. So, for item eight, it's three items together. So, this is a discussion on item eight, flood control one and fire protection two. We'll begin with public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson-Rimmer. We do have six total requests to speak, two individuals in person, four requesting to speak by phone. I'd also like to note for the record, we did not receive any ecomments on this item. Again, for any individuals that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. Like to invite forward allegedly Audra and Cesar Javier to the podium. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
Caesar's donating his time to me, he said, so. No, Jim? That's weird. Yeah, the cost of the phone system, I mean, you need to really fix that because it's like really a pain in the ass to call in. And Zoom is actually really easy. People can call into that. It's pretty cheap, but I bet you we spent a million bucks on this phone system that's a POS. So, anyhow, and that's the problem is like, you guys want full-cost recovery for things and it's like, you know, what do we see in return for the money that you guys take from us? We see the government growing bigger and bigger and just charging us more. So, then get full-cost recovery because they're, you know, spending 80 to 90% on people's salaries. So, then all that we have left for some program or something is 10%. No wonder you're coming back to the people for more money. And I'm wondering with this one, you know, is this because this is for, you know, fire zones and the stormwater maintenance zones, which you guys already have failed miserably at making sure that people aren't going to lose everything in a storm? So, we definitely can trust this money is not going to go where it needs to go. But I'm wondering, like, because chemtrails and the cloud seeding are really what get these fires going, so are we going to like put money into that? Just wondering, you know? Because those things don't exist. They don't. It's total propaganda when you talk about cloud seeding and chemtrails and all of that nano-thermite and stuff, all those heavy metals being sprayed into the atmosphere, you know, to help us with the drought that we're having. So, I don't know, maybe you guys could spend some more money on that because that'd probably, you know, be beneficial to, you know, taking more property from people. So, I'm just trying to help you guys rip that Band-Aid off a lot quicker, okay?
Thank you. And we will go to the phone callers. Again, when it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear recording that will tell you to begin your comments and we'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Which item is this?
This is item, this is item eight, flood.
Hello?
Yes, hi, Paul.
Hello?
This is item.
Oh, the, um, the levies for the county services and fire protection districts are much better. They seem to be tailored to the community's actual needs and tax levies are only being increased for three of the districts. Moreover, there are by district justifications for the increase. You know, I agree that these tax levies are for pretty stupid things like spraying us with toxic chemicals or putting weed killer that's known toxic all over the place near schools and all. So, you know, I mean, I guess it kind of balances out this time that levies aren't terrible, but, you know, I really wish you'd have some moderation and common sense and not try to kill us at the same time as you're taxing us because you'll probably end up with less taxes. Thanks.
Thank you. And not seeing any callers in the queue, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Do any of my colleagues have anything to say?
I will move approval.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Montgomery Stapp. I'm happy to, oh, great. Supervisor Desmond will second. Please take a vote.
Supervisor Desmond.
Supervisor Desmond.
Oh, fine.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present voting aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. We now move on to discussion item nine, sanitation district one. We'll begin a public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson-Rimmer. Let me just get caught up here. There we go. All right. So, for item nine and sanitation one, we do have six total requests to speak, two in person, four requesting to speak by phone. Also like to note for the record, we did not receive any ecomments on this item. Like to invite forward allegedly Audra and Cesar Javier. You have two minutes to address the board.
Looks like people just got stopped being paid, so they have to leave. It's like Antifa, shoot. Yeah, this one's interesting. $1,320 a year, that's a good one, you know, to really get people and hit them where it hurts. And so, I'm thinking, it's like, since we're poisoning people through the water system and whatnot, I mean, using the fluoride and, you know, all of those, you know, chlorines and, you know, toxic things, I mean, I don't know if we could, I mean, if you really want to not let people know what you're doing, I wouldn't charge them more to toxify stuff. If you made it free, people would probably drink more of it and just really, you know, get that third eye, you know, really calcified because that's what, you know, helps people to just thank you for what you're doing to them. Thank you guys so much. You're so honorable and I'm just so thankful that you're destroying so much around us. It's so good that we pay taxes. It's great, especially when it goes to child trafficking. That's good. I mean, because we can't not have that going on. I mean, it's a very lucrative business. You know what I'm saying? I mean, think about how many times you can sell a child, especially because they're young. And then as they get older, you can keep selling them. They're not going to be worth as much, but, you know, you can still sell. And I mean, you know, people are probably be like, they've been around the block way too many times. But, you know, with children, because they're so resilient, you know, it's something that, you know, is really, really good to do. And we spend a lot of money on that here in the county. And so, you know, maybe some of those homes that you take from the people that aren't able to pay this can be little, you know, respite homes like the Polanski Center for the children. Just go stash them away, you know what I mean? Have it be like the Lord of, or what is it? Lord of Flies, whatever, Lord of the Rings, who knows? Let them just go at it. You know what I'm saying? It's good.
Thank you. Your time is up. Go ahead and go to the phone callers and we will begin with our first caller.
Yes, again, this, this thing seems to be carefully thought out, giving consideration to individual circumstances. However, Audra mentioned something about a $1,300 tax levy, which, you know, for some people there with limited incomes is ridiculous. I mean, what are they going to do? Live on their pee or something? I mean, they might as well, given, given what junk is in the water these days. And unfortunately, you guys seem to think that toxic stuff is actually good for us, like, you know, the fluoridation at levels way above what's needed or necessary for, actually, I've read that it's bad for kids to have it that high. So, you know, you have to really watch it on what you put in the water. But, you know, I mean, it is carefully thought out. Anyway, that, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And not seeing any callers called in the queue, Vice Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, I'm happy to make a motion. Any of my colleagues have comments or?
Second.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present voting aye.
Okay. Now we have item 10. This is the appeal of the Paradise Valley Road Wireless Telecommunication Facility. I'm going to hand it to our county team for presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson-Rimmer. We do have a presentation. Before we get started, I'd like to read a very brief statement regarding this item, which is located in District One. Before we begin our presentation today, we'd like to address a concern that's been raised in the public comments regarding the appeal of the Paradise Valley Wireless Telecommunication Facility project, which, as I mentioned, is proposed in District One. The concern is regarding considering this without a supervisor representing the district. Under the county code, staff are required to bring forward appeals within 120 days of the date the appeal was filed. The appeal being presented today was submitted to the county 108 days ago. So, as a result, staff is unable to postpone the hearing today based on the lack of representative in District One because of due process. We'll now proceed with the presentation. Thank you, team.
Good morning, Vice Chair Lawson-Rimmer and supervisors. I'm Kathleen Fan with Planning and Development Services. Today, Angelica Trong and I present item number 10, the Paradise Valley Wireless Telecommunications Facility Appeal. Staff is here before you today recommending denial of the appeal. The project site identified by the red star is located within the Spring Valley Community Plan area along Paradise Valley Road. Existing uses in the area include single-family residences, multifamily residences, and the State Route 125 and 54 freeway interchange. The site owned by the San Diego County Water Authority includes an operations building, equipment storage, and the San Diego Aqueduct easement along the northeastern edge. The applicant's request is to construct, operate, and maintain a new wireless telecommunications facility consisting of a new 35-foot-tall faux monohyacinth tree as well as a new 8-foot-tall concrete masonry unit enclosure. The applicant is constrained in relocating the facility because the property is actively utilized by the Water Authority for storage purposes and the San Diego Aqueduct easement further restricts the location of the tower. The proposed The proposed telecommunications facility requires the approval of a major use permit and amortization of the wireless facility for a ten-year period in accordance with the current requirements for wireless telecommunications facilities. Today's item is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve the proposed project. On February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, the Planning Commission voted to approve the revised project by a vote of four yes, with one abstained commissioner and one absent. On March tenth, twenty-twenty-five, a resident on behalf of Sweetwater Hills Town Homes filed an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. The appeal contained four main points. For the first point, the appeal states the project was improperly granted a categorical exemption under CEQA due to unusual circumstances, including proximity to Little Star's daycare, fire risk from a twenty-kilowatt diesel generator, and potential contamination of the Sweetwater Aqueduct and reservoir, saying that these concerns warrant preparation of a full environmental impact report or mitigated negative declaration. Staff evaluated the project and determined that it qualifies for a categorical exemption, which applies to small facilities and equipment installations. The concerns raised in the appeal regarding proximity to a daycare, fire risk, and potential water contamination were thoroughly reviewed by county staff and relevant agencies, and no significant environmental impacts were identified. The San Miguel Fire Protection District confirmed the project meets all fire safety requirements, and county staff found no impacts to the Sweetwater Aqueduct and reservoir. The exemption was properly applied, and no further environmental review is required. The second point of appeal claims that AT&amp;T's coverage justification is based on unreliable theoretical maps. They request that the county require a real-world test drive to verify any claimed coverage gaps. Staff evaluated the coverage analysis provided by AT&amp;T and determined that the analysis meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Predictive coverage models, while theoretical, are industry-standard tools accepted by the FCC and are sufficient under county regulations. Staff concluded that AT&amp;T provided adequate technical justification, and a project is necessary to improve service capacity and reliability in the area. The third point of appeal states that the San Diego County applies inconsistent setback policies requiring small cell wireless facilities to be at least three hundred feet from childcare centers, while non-small cell facilities have no defined setback from schools or childcare centers. The appellant contends that this setback inconsistency unfairly impacts unincorporated communities like Spring Valley. The third point of appeal recognizes inconsistencies in setback policies for small cell and non-small cell wireless facilities. Three hundred-foot setback is intended to reduce visual clutter from sensitive receptors such as childcare centers. The proposed facility complies with the minimum fifty-foot setback from residential properties and was further adjusted during the appeal process to increase distance from nearby homes. Federal law prohibits local governments from regulating wireless facilities based on radio frequency emissions if the facility complies with SEC standards. The fourth point of appeal references cases in La Jolla and Encinitas where stronger wireless regulations and community advocacy led to the rejection or modification of similar projects. They argue that the board should ensure equitable treatment for Spring Valley residents by adopting similar protections. The fourth point of appeal references projects in coastal cities raising concerns about equitable treatment across communities. Each jurisdiction has unique zoning laws, land use policies, and regulatory frameworks that influence project approval. The county evaluates projects based on its own regulations and has determined that this project meets all relevant criteria, ensuring reliable wireless service in areas like Spring Valley is part of the county's commitment to equitable infrastructure access. Denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission approval for this project supports the county's long-term goals by improving wireless connectivity and enhancing emergency communication capabilities. The board can take various actions on this appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. The board can deny the appeal and sustain this Planning Commission's decision to approve the project, or grant the appeal and deny the project, or send the project back to staff for additional analysis, request for information, and/or reconsideration, including any additional direction from the board, and return to the board within a specified time period. On February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the Spring Valley Community Plan Group made a recommendation to deny the project, but the motion failed as it did not have quorum. The group was asked if they would want to discuss and vote on the appeal, and the group declined to reevaluate the application. Based on staff's analysis, we recommend the board or supervisor take the following actions: deny the appeal based on the analysis provided in the board letter, uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve the project, make the findings and impose the requirements and conditions included in the form decision, adopt the environmental findings included in attachment B, and require the applicant to enter into an agreement to defend and indemnify the county in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars, and authorize the director, PDS, to execute the agreement. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I do know we had a number of public commenters, so can we please go to public comment? Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We actually do have two group presentations from the applicant and appellant. So we will begin with those group presentations. I'd like to invite forward the applicant. You will have ten minutes to address the board. All three members of the group must speak during that ten minutes. Please self-regulate your time with a timer on the podium. I'd like to invite the first group presentation that includes the following individuals: John, Brian, and Antoinette. And as a reminder, each person in the group may speak for no more than four minutes. As you come forward, please state your name at the podium before you begin your presentation.
Thank you, and good morning, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer and supervisors and county staff. I'm John Heffernan, I'm a member of the AT&amp;T External Affairs Team. So at AT&amp;T, we have a dedicated group statewide that engage with community stakeholders. We support community-based organizations, we proudly represent AT&amp;T, we serve on the boards of those groups, and we also appear before bodies when there is a hearing. And in this case, we also take seriously concerns from communities on some of our projects. I appreciate the time you spent preparing for this item and appreciate your thoughtful consideration. I am not an attorney, I'm not an engineer, or nor a project manager, but I work closely with all three of them, so I'm going to hand it off to our trusted vendor, MD Seven, who works with your staff week in and week out, year in and year out, as we continue to upgrade and maintain our wireless connectivity service here in the county. We have a team of engineers that monitors our network performance, and when they see a gap, we move, we allocate capital dollars, and we start an extensive project. And we rely on MD Seven to, to work with staff and to deliver the permits, which ultimately will lead to construction. So now I'll hand it off to MD Seven.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Antoinette Ocampo. I am the Director of Development for MD Seven LLC. MD Seven was founded in two thousand and three with the vision of helping and utilizing clients like AT&amp;T to form digital infrastructure management and consulting, and we're here today for you to consider our appeal for this specific Paradise Valley Road Wireless Telecommunication, and we're happy to address any questions you may have in addition. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. Excuse me. My name is Brian Mackey with MD Seven. On behalf of AT&amp;T, I'd like to begin by sincerely thanking San Diego County staff for their time, effort, and thorough review of this project. Our close coordination has been instrumental in helping move this project forward. This proposed wireless facility will provide meaningful benefits to more than eight thousand nine hundred customers, including residents, businesses, and public safety personnel. This will also provide coverage to State Route 125, a critical transit corridor serving more than sixty-six thousand daily commuter trips. I have a short presentation to provide a couple additional details. If we could go to slide five, please. The facility has been thoughtfully designed as a mono-eucalyptus tree to harmonize with the surrounding landscape, thereby maintaining the visual integrity and character of the community. If we could go to slide seven, please. As you can see here, the San Diego County Water Authority utilizes this parcel for equipment storage. Our facility citing work to both facilitate this use and meet our coverage objectives. If we could go to slide ten, please. Alternative locations were thoroughly evaluated. The three alternative sites ID'd that would meet coverage objectives did not meet the necessary criteria outlined in the county's zoning ordinance or general plan, excuse me. These sites fell short for several reasons, including zoning preferences, land use compatibility, and the county's concealment standards for wireless facilities. As a result, they were not viable options for this project. If we could go to slide eleven, please. Our project team engaged with the nearby residents to hear their concerns and try to address them, and you will hear about some of those concerns today. Our project fully complies with all governing regulations, including the county's zoning ordinance, the general plan, and the California Environmental Quality Act. Our project team took extra steps to address residents' concerns, excuse me. We collaborated closely with the San Diego County Water Authority, the property owner, to adjust the facility's original location, relocating it as far from nearby residences as site conditions would allow. The arguments in the appeal before you does not provide substantial evidence of significant environmental or community harm. The county's comprehensive analysis confirms the project's compliance and suitability. If we could go to slide twelve, please, and this will be our last slide. This project represents a significant enhancement to the region's telecommunications infrastructure, reinforcing public safety, supporting emergency response capabilities, and ensuring reliable connectivity for residents and businesses alike. We've submitted a detailed response letter to your offices addressing each specific concern raised in the appeal, and we're happy to answer any additional questions you may have today. We respectfully urge the board to uphold county staff's recommendation and deny the appeal, allowing this critical infrastructure improvement to proceed for the benefit of the broader community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and go to the appellant. Like to invite forward Maggie, Tanisha, and I believe it's Gerardo. You'll have ten minutes. You'll have ten minutes to address the board, and again, just as a friendly reminder, no person may speak more than four minutes, and as you come forward, if you could please state your name for the record.
I just had a question, that's what I was asking about. I didn't know if I could split up my four minutes so I could speak and then introduce my neighbors and then-
You can go ahead and just introduce your, everyone can introduce themselves, and then just speak for your allotment, I think would be best.
Okay. Okay, good morning, thank you. My name is Maggie Winterton, and I am speaking today not just as a homeowner, but on behalf of the dozens of neighbors who live, work, and raise families just sixty feet from the site of this proposed project at eight five 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 Paradise Valley Road. I think lost in those presentations was the fact that it's sixty feet from our condos. It's sixty feet, well, sixty-two. We live at eight five three five Paradise Valley Road, which is Sweetwater Hills Town Homes. I don't have a nice PowerPoint or anything because I'm just a mom doing this. Our neighborhood crowdfunded this appeal because we believe in it so strongly. This is our story, and I ask you to please listen to our voices today. We are being told to accept a big thirty-five-foot faux eucalyptus tower with a diesel generator and electrical equipment directly across from homes and a daycare. Let's be honest, that no amount of camouflage will hide that this is a giant fake tree. We all noticed them. CECA specifically says exemptions don't apply when unusual circumstances could cause serious environmental harm. That is exactly what we're looking at here, in our opinion. Little Star's daycare is just across the street. According to the current San Diego County regulations, which this was touched on, if this were a small cell tower, the county would require three hundred-foot setback, but because this is a larger macro tower, the setback doesn't apply. That is inconsistent and unfair. We're told this tower is necessary for coverage. By the way, AT&amp;T never reached out to us, MD Seven never reached out to us to address concerns. I reached out once. I obtained the information from the county to reach out, and only then were some questions answered, and I never heard anything after the appeal was filed. The justification relies on theoretical maps and not real-world drive tests. I have AT&amp;T, I would like a cool tower, but I already have 5G, so why can't we see drive tests? The project was already rejected by private landowners, that's part of why some of those sites weren't chosen, and by the Spring Valley Planning Group and the County Planning Board. We just want to know, why is this happening? Why does it have to be tucked into a sliver of land owned by the San Diego County Water Authority and then being approved by the county itself? We believe there are significant fire protection issues, and one of my neighbors will speak about that, as well as just the unfairness that we feel, and I certainly felt that sitting there and listening to the presentations. I have personally fought for two years to oppose this tower. To be corny, Board of Supervisors, you're our only hope. Frankly, I feel gaslit. Our concerns have been met by the county staff thus far by essentially saying that we're wrong, the CECA exemption is fine, AT&amp;T says they need more coverage, and that's all the proof we need. Basically, trust us, it's fine. I just want to ask you, Board of Supervisors, do you think it's fine? I think this could be a chance for you to update these regulations. And now my neighbors will speak.
Hello, good morning. I'm Gerardo, and I'm also a own home at Sweetwater Hometowns. I want to speak briefly and safely, particularly fire and water risk. This site is just sixty feet from homes. Our community has already seen two fires nearby this last year, including one across the street from where this tower will go. This proposal includes a diesel generator and flammable vegetation. We've been told that Manzanita trees may be planted around the water, I'm in the tower, and plan known to easily burn. What will be burned next? If a fire occurred nearby, or the tower itself causes a fire, it's our homes. My home is just like, just next door. A plan known to easily burn is the Manzanita, that's why I'm like, I'm concerned just to know about that. California Fly recommends a hundred feet of defensible space between structures and combustible vegetation in fire-prone areas. This plan doesn't mean that. And while this may not be officially classified as a high-fire hazard zone, we know that threat is real. And if a fire happens, firefighting chemicals, which are often PFAS-based, could contaminate the Sweetwater Reservoir and Aqueduct, which side just downhill. These are drinking water sources for thousands of people. This is a huge risk. We're already seeing PFAS contamination after telecom fires in other parts of California. We don't know the true risk here because no environmental impact report was conducted, no mitigated negative declaration either, and EIR will have come with community input and mitigation measures. We don't know for sure that this project will truly come along with adequate mitigation measures either. In twenty-twenty-five, fire risk response and planning is necessary. Please take this into consideration with your vote today. Thank you very much.
Good morning, my name is Tanisha. I want to talk about fairness, because from the start, this process has felt anything but. For example, La Jolla residents raised concerns about a similar proposed cell tower near their bike path, and- their bike path, and after community opposition, the project was withdrawn. My community has opposed this project vocally for two years, but in Spring Valley, an unincorporated area, this macro tower is being placed 60 feet from homes and 300 feet from a daycare, and it's being treated like it's normal. In the images that you saw, you didn't see our backyards and balconies. I think that was on purpose, because you would have seen how insanely close it is. The project was rejected by landowners of potential sites, then it was moved to County Water Authority land, and now the county is in charge of approving it. There are other potential sites nearby that aren't 60 feet from someone's back door. If you would not vote to have this placed in your own backyards, literally your backyards where you wake up with this view every day and your children play, please do not approve it to be placed in ours. The bottom line is that Spring Valley should not be the path of least resistance. We shouldn't become the dumping grounds for these industrial projects, and certainly not so close to hundreds of homes. I'm just here today because my home happens to be the closest. We are not asking you to say no to a tower in Spring Valley. We are asking you to say no to this site for the tower. We don't have a city council, mayor, or even a supervisor currently to fight for us, but we do have a voice. We submitted a petition with signatures from over 80% of our homeowners to the County Planning Board, and we crowdfunded this costly appeal ourselves. Earlier this year, I attended the funeral of my dear family member, the Honorable Leon Williams. During the service, we were encouraged to do something for our community in his honor. This is me doing something. Please hear what we, the people, are asking. Please listen to our voices and act on our behalf. Please choose people over profits. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will go... We did have 13, or total 13 more, 13 requests to speak, so pursuant to the board's rules, the rest of remaining agenda speakers will have one minute. We have... I'd also like to note, for the record, we did receive one e-comment on this item, so we'll go to the rest of the in-person speakers, and I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra and Cesar Javier.
This is sad, because normally, this is something they would vote through. You guys absolutely should not be deciding this for people that you don't even represent in that, the district. You should be waiting until there is a representative in there, because, I mean, they had some great concerns, but I'd be more concerned about the radio frequencies that are going to be coming off of those towers. And it's like, you know, when COVID was around and all the 5G went up, exactly all of those areas where people were sick. So, I mean, if you want to have another outbreak, that's what's going to happen, is these people are going to have symptoms of the flu and different things like that from radiation poisoning. And so, I mean, this shouldn't even be... And I don't understand, how can a smaller unit make you be 300 feet away from a child facility, but then if it's bigger, it doesn't matter? Let's put it right... I mean, why don't they just like climb up it? You know what I'm saying? Doesn't matter if you put some faux tree there, you're poisoning and toxifying the people. Don't vote on this.
Thank you. And not seeing Cesar coming to the podium, we'll go ahead and go to our phone callers. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
It's extremely disturbing that the MUP findings mention noise. There will be a lot, but not electronic radiation, which can cause trauma from headaches to severe disease. Probably with children, it will be more severe. I went to a July Vista City Council meeting where AT&amp;T put a 5G wireless antenna next to a church in about 100 yards from a nursery school in a residential neighborhood like yours, and threatened legal action over some FCC rule, but it does not care about the people as individuals if one happens to be more sensitive to the electric radiation. I do not know why AT&amp;T does not do an RF study for 5G coverage when five sources, including the FCC, show full coverage already.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
I want to give a big, great job to Maggie Winterton for filling this thorough appeal against AT&amp;T and one of their countless toxic towers. The case studies from La Jolla Institute is either denying cell towers or increasing the distance for cell towers from homes was informative. I agree that these cell companies never explain why they need these cell towers so close to homes. I'm definitely concerned about this proposed toxic tower being very close to Little Stars daycare. Is it normal for cell towers to be only 73 feet away from homes? Is it normal for cell towers to have 20-watt diesel generators? The 35-foot-tall faux tree will have a 300-square-foot, eight-foot-tall concrete unit full of equipment and a GPS antenna. There might be landscaping to screen the equipment enclosure, but AT&amp;T can't afford a proper artistic design for their toxic junk they keep dumping into people's neighborhoods? And who owns the lot directly at the corner of the intersection? That location would have been further away. The county needs to stop using Spring Valley as a dump site, like for their shelters, their sleeping cabins, et cetera.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
I'm guessing you guys are on item 10. I do have a full-time job, so it's hard for me to keep up with your supervisor meetings. As I understand it, the community planning group in Spring Valley has already denied the AT&amp;T cell tower, but here we are talking about an appeal. I highly encourage you all to deny this appeal. We in Spring Valley do not want this cell tower. And once again, just to remind you, we do have a right to instruct you on what to do. So I hope you take the right decision here. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
I also agree that the unincorporated areas seem to be the preferred dumping grounds for everything that the county does not want to put in their, in their other districts. It is really unfair. From potshots, sexually violent predators, battery energy storage centers, you name it. If it's politically sensitive, it gets stuck in the unincorporated areas. And these folks from these unincorporated planning groups, et cetera, who go to so much trouble to have their voices heard, we can expect that what is going to happen, it is already a preordained decision, that the county is going to ignore them as they usually do. So they will have spent their money and their time for nothing. They need representation, and you're not allowing the unincorporated supervisors that are in those counties to have a greater voice. It is time that you... When are you going to do the work?
Thank you. Your time is up. And Vice Chair Lawson, remember, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. We have a request to speak from Supervisor Desmond.
Yes, and thanks for the presentation, and thanks for the applicants and the appellant for showing up here today. I do have... I remember this when I was mayor of San Marcos. Nobody wants a cell tower anywhere near them, but everybody wants cell service, particularly in an emergency and things like that. And I realize federal law prohibits us from regulating facilities based on radio frequency emissions or anything like that. I mean, if we do that, we're going to get sued. AT&amp;T is going to sue us, and they're going to, they're going to win. It's federal law. But I do have a question. It just, it doesn't make sense, and I know it's probably not our regulation, somebody else's, but the 300-foot setback for small wireless facilities versus this larger one that only has a 50-foot setbacks, what's, what gives?
Supervisor Desmond, through the chair. So there are two different sets of regulations that apply to wireless facilities. There's one set of regulations that apply to the small cell facilities. These are smaller facilities typically located in county right-of-way and more urbanized areas. The proposed facility today is not a small cell wireless facility. It is a non-small cell wireless facility. These are the larger facilities. They have larger antennas that are usually mounted on larger poles. They provide broader coverage. They are most likely located in more rural, semi-rural areas to provide broader coverage, larger areas versus the small cell facilities, which is located in kind of the right-of-way areas. The rules that were adopted for the small cell wireless facilities do provide a 300-foot setback. The code requirements for the non-small, similar to the one that's proposed today, they do not include a 300-foot setback. They include a 50-foot setback from property line, which this proposed facility exceeds. But the setbacks were different based on the different technologies involved.
And who's, who set those setbacks for the, between the smaller and the larger one? Is that federal, state? Who is that?
No, the federal, the federal regulations did set requirements for the small cell facilities supervisor, but I believe the 300-foot setback was set by the county pertaining just for the small cell.
Just for the small ones?
That's correct.
All right. Okay. I'll, I mean, these are hard, and nobody wants them near them, but they're a necessity, I think, particularly for safety and for communications. I'll go ahead and move the item. I guess this is, are we voting for the appeal or are we voting against the appeal? Or, I mean, the appeal is a question.
It says, yeah, the recommendation for the Department of Planning and Development Services to, to, one, deny the appeal, adopt the CEQA findings, sustain the planning permissions. Okay. So it's all of them, numbers one, two, three, and four?
So that's staff's recommendation, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll move staff's recommendation to deny the appeal.
Okay. Supervisor Montgomery, step.
How are we describing a rural versus semi-rural versus urban area? I'm very familiar with this area, and so it does have quite a few homes. It has churches across the freeway. It has a grocery store and a Target and a Ross and a McDonald's that recently burned. And, yeah, so how are we describing that to kind of coincide with the setback requirements for the smaller projects versus the larger?
Supervisor Montgomery, step through the, through the vice chair. When I mentioned the more urban nature, I was just speaking generally about where these types of facilities are located. The small cell facilities are typically in the county right-of-way, within the roads, adjacent to kind of urbanized businesses. These proposed larger facilities are just located generally in more semi-rural, rural areas to provide broader coverage.
So, okay, generally, how would you describe this area, based on what you just said? And I just, you know, because I had the same question the Supervisor Desmond had, and so if we are, there has to be some kind of definitive process and, and clear definition about what we are describing as rural, semi-rural, or urban, so we determine what, whether the small or larger project, the setbacks that are involved, what, generally speaking, smaller projects go in rural area, I mean, the urban areas. So if we were to consider this an urban area, how is a larger project allowed in it?
Supervisor, the setbacks do not depend on whether the area is considered urban, semi-rural, or rural. The setbacks for this proposed facility, it's just the minimum 50-foot from the property line, which this would exceed. So apologies for the misunderstanding, but the setbacks are unrelated to whether it's designated urban or semi-rural or rural.
Okay, the setbacks are only related to whether a project is larger or smaller?
That's correct, Supervisor.
What, what in our code allows for us to have a larger project in an urban area?
The same rules would apply, Supervisor. So we would look at it to make sure that they meet the minimum setback from property line, that they meet the height limitation of that particular zone. So the same rules would apply to if an urban area or a semi-rural area for these proposed large facilities. Those apply across the board in any community within the unincorporated area.
So then I'll go back to the question. Why do we have a larger setback for a smaller project?
Through the, through the vice chair supervisor, the setbacks when they were originally established were established by the Board of Supervisors. The, I believe it was federal agency that superseded the county's regulation for small cell, making those setbacks at a different level in post when the board originally implemented the setbacks for the large facilities and all facilities. So essentially, we had another agency that superseded us come in and set a different setback requirement for the small cell that was different from what we applied to all cell towers prior to that.
I think, I think just common sense approach would say that if we, if we have a larger project, then, not naturally, but it might, we might want to look at having those similar or even larger setbacks for a larger project. I mean, it just, and so if that's something that we can look at as a board, I'm sure there's much more analysis that is needed for that, but it just doesn't make sense that we, we are, we have regulations right now that we can actually control that would allow us to have more feet with regard to setback for a larger project that is kind of consistent with the way we evaluate a smaller project. So, I don't, Chair, I don't know if Davia wanted to say anything, but those are the only questions that I had.
I'm going to put myself on the queue. I had a very similar set of questions as my colleagues. I just want to make, they asked most of them. I just want to repeat back to make sure I've captured this. The board had adopted previously some regulations regarding cell tower setbacks, all cell tower setbacks, large, small, medium, cell tower setbacks of all kinds and shapes, whether they look like a tower or a eucalyptus tree. And that setback was 50 feet. That was the board policy. Is this correct so far? Then the federal agency, what federal agency came along? Who? Who? What federal agency?
Vice Chair Lawson, remember, the FCC is the one who set the rules.
The FCC came along and said, these small cell towers, I don't know, something happened in Washington, people didn't want these towers. They said, these small cell towers for the whole country have to be 300 feet. Am I tracking so far?
Through the vice chair, for the setbacks that are the 300 feet for the, for the small ones, that was the federal agency that set that requirement, the setbacks for...
That's what I just asked. I just want to make sure I'm super clearly following, because I'm, got a little lost here. So my understanding, just for feedback, is that we have rules saying all cell towers, large, small, whether it looks like a tower or eucalyptus tree, doesn't matter of any sort, has to be 50 feet. That was our rules. Then along comes FCC and has some set of rules that only apply to small cell towers and say, small cell towers have to be 300 feet, but their rules are not all-inclusive. It only includes small cell towers. Is this correct, or am I misunderstanding? Because this is very important, because this is like the crux of the whole thing.
Vice Chair Lawson, remember, just to clarify, the 300-foot setback was something the county adopted as part of our small cell wireless adoption. There were a number of things that the federal law did do. I mean, it made those permits ministerial, so they no longer had to go through our CEQA environmental review process. They just required building permits. But we, as a county, when we adopted those regulations, we did set that 300-foot setback for just the small cell facilities.
So what is the, what is the role that the FCC played in determining setbacks?
Vice Chair Lawson, remember, they did not. Their role was just to make sure that those small cell facilities were a ministerial or a by-right permit process.
Okay, so the setbacks, the FCC had nothing to do with these. These setbacks are all county, all determined by the county. Am I following so far? Okay. So when we adopted rules around a 300-foot setback, why, I mean, am I just being clear that there were no rules adopted regarding the large tower? Or did we adopt different rules, saying large towers have a 50-foot and small towers have a 300-foot?
That summary is correct, Vice Chair. It was solely focused on the small cell facility at the time, so the setback that was adopted only pertained to the small cell facilities, not the, the non-small cell facilities.
Okay. So what are the setback requirements? Like, is there any? If there's, is there any, what are the setbacks that apply to large towers? If only, 300 feet only applies to small towers?
It was the ones that we had referenced earlier, the 50-foot from property line as a minimum setback.
But where was that adopted?
Oh, that's in the county code, Vice Chair.
Saying, so we did at some point adopt a different guideline for large towers?
They actually predated the FCC regulations related to the small cell, so they were already in the county code when the small cell wireless facilities came forward.
Sorry, guys. I really apologize. I'm making everyone a little crazy, but I am not following.
So through the chair, and apologies, this is, it is confusing. The county had regulations in effect for cell towers, large, small, medium, as referenced. There was an FCC requirement...
And what was that requirement? And what was that requirement?
300.
Because you, I thought it was 50 and then you said 300.
It was originally, it was originally 50 feet.
Okay.
When the FCC put a requirement in place, I don't remember how many years ago, 12, 15 years ago, it made the small cell wireless permits ministerial, which changed the consideration for who approves them. At that time, the board had approved a small cell wireless ordinance update. And so this ordinance update was focused on small cell sites. And at that time, when those small sites had been shifted from discretionary to ministerial, meaning it would not then go to the board for consideration, the board and the community input at the time was largely, we would like greater setbacks since they will be ministerial. So at that juncture, the zoning ordinance that was approved by the board 12, 15 years ago, I don't remember the exact date, added a, a larger setback for the small cell since they would be ministerial based on FCC direction. So federal guidance saying that they had to be ministerial then put the prior board into a place where they wanted to have a greater setback since those small cell wireless facilities would be ministerial only and not go to a hearing body for consideration.
And the hearing body that, so those small, do they go to the planning commission or nobody?
For small cell, they are ministerial, meaning they don't go to the planning commission or anybody for discretionary review. They are approved if they meet the code requirements.
Okay. So then to summarize, to make sure I'm very clear, and again, I'm apologizing, I feel like it should not be so confusing, so I'm sorry. But just to be very clear, the reason that large towers have narrow, smaller setbacks is because the idea is that, hey, it goes to the planning commission, it goes to the, like, neighborhood review, it goes to us. And so all along the way, there's like checks and saying, hey, maybe 50 isn't so smart, but we're not going to require a larger setback because it's not ministerial. Is that like the logic of the, of the...
That, that is a good synopsis of the, of the methodology and logic that was in place during the small cell wireless update, yes.
Well, it creates a problem for us right now, because that fundamentally basically says that it really needs to be looked at carefully, because there's, no one thought, oh, okay, we need a, like, a big setback. It's basically saying, we don't know, throwing up like, we don't know what the right answer is going to be. We're going to leave it to the planning commission, as opposed to it being like a staff-level assessment. Because it's essentially saying the safeguard is not like setbacks and it's not like staff approval. The safeguard is going to the planning commission and going to the board. And well, obviously, we have a problem because the representative, because a representative for this community is not here. I don't know that this even, I'm not sure exactly where this leaves us, but I'm identifying like a fundamental problem with the way this whole thing has gone down. I don't, I mean, sorry if I'm being not like particularly articulate, but like the check and balance is not, is not the setback. Like, when I, you know, usually when this stuff comes to us, if folks like, like, play by the rules, check the boxes, and it sounds like AT&amp;T did, they did their part, they did everything right, they like totally, like, did everything right. By the time it gets to us, like, they've done all the, they've done everything right. They've done everything they're supposed to do. And you can't really expect AT&amp;T to do anything other than what they're being asked. It almost feels like unfair to AT&amp;T that they were told that this was the, that this was what they needed to accomplish in order to be in compliance, but actually, like, fundamental premise of the, like, regulatory regime regarding large cell towers is that it is discretionary, which is like not right for AT&amp;T, who's like over there trying to build a cell tower, and obviously not right for the community, because there's not clarity around what the rules are. And then they're just left, like, who are they supposed to come to? And then they, they end up here, also with no representative. So that, I think, I mean, again, I'm not even sure where this leaves us, but this is not good.
That's right.
Davia?
Vice chair, if I may, Inga, I'm not sure if there are any options. I don't want to put you on the spot here, but in terms of the options for the board, considering where we're at today, I will share in terms of future opportunities, we will be able to proceed with updating the zoning ordinance if that is something that the board would like to do. Of course, there would be costs associated with this. This is older. I do see the challenges with this zoning ordinance that have been raised today. So we can consider that. I do think there would be other objections to that, but we could go through the process if that's something the board does want to do at a later point. In terms of today, Inga, is there anything that you'd want to share with the board as far as options?
Nothing in particular. I think you highlighted, Davia, that the board's primary power here with the setbacks is to change them moving forward. But for today, the board's action needs to occur within the context of the rules that we have in place now. So the board needs to consider whether it feels like the project meets the current findings necessary to grant an MUP and move forward from there.
Vice chair, if I may ask the team, I know this, this may or may not be determinate for you all, but there were additional steps taken during the discretionary process to move the facility another approximately 12 feet from the original setback. I believe there were other design considerations included as well. If you'd like to know more, we can highlight that. I do understand that the appellant's position remains.
Can I ask another question? So it went to the planning commission. Was there any other, I mean, the planning commission's a big commission, it looks at the whole county. Was there any other body that was more local that voted on this before it got to the planning commission?
Yes, vice chair, that went to the, the local planning group as a advisory body before it went to the planning commission.
And what was the vote of the local group?
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, they were not able to pass a motion. It just failed lack of a majority vote.
But what do you mean? Like, no, it was neither for nor against?
Correct. It was basically a split vote.
I would love a little more details about this, because apparently there's only been one vote taken by anyone who represents these people.
Yeah, there was a motion made at that, that local planning group meeting, I believe to deny the facility. The motion basically failed. It was a vote of six to six. It needed a majority of seven members to, to vote to actually pass it. So there was no formal recommendation made by the, the local Spring Valley Community Planning Group.
Okay. Monica, I don't know. I feel like you're, you know where this, I don't even know this neighborhood, but this doesn't seem right. I don't know. I'm not sure.
Well, I will say, based on my position here today, I think the, I believe that the appellants have met the burden. So I'll just say that, that's where I stand. So, and so I will be, another motion on the floor right now, we don't have a second yet, but the motion is to, to move staff recommendation, which would be to deny the appeal. I'm not voting in favor of that. So, I would say, though, procedurally, right now, we do have a motion, and there's another supervisor on the line, so I, I will just, I, I will, let's, let's go there and then I'll have some procedural, just, questions.
Yeah, thank you.
I would like staff to walk me through again.
That would be great. I mean, I really feel very deferential to the two of you. At least you guys are closer to this community.
Well, if we don't pass it today, staff recommendation, I'd like to know what the outcome is. And if we do pass it, I'd just like to know what happens. So often, there's a default.
Right. That's what I'm noticing, and that's what I'm not, it's like, sort of, it just goes and goes and nobody stops.
No, no, I mean, on some of these things, because of the process that's set up, if we don't pass it, there's a default that moves forward. And I just want to know what the ramifications are.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Inga, is that something that you would be able to speak to for us?
Yes, I'm going to look through the rules currently and the, our planning and zoning rules to make sure I understand what happens if there's a...
It's also noted in the board letter.
Okay. I found it. I'll read it. It says, "The board can, one, deny the appeal and sustain the planning commission's decision." So that was, that was Supervisor Desmond's motion, to deny the appeal and sustain the planning commission's decision to approve the MUP, the major use permit. Second, we can grant the appeal and deny the major use permit, which is, I think, what Supervisor Monica Riestep indicated was what she was going to be supporting today. And the third option is to continue the appeal and send the major use permit back to staff for additional environmental analysis and/or reconsideration, including any additional direction from the board and return to the board within a specified time period. If any motion does not get three votes, then the appeal is deemed denied. In other words, number one happens and the tower gets built, unless reconsideration was requested by one of the board members after the hearing. Should I read it again?
No, but it was good to hear it again.
So what are your thoughts?
I don't know.
I'm leaning towards three, and I think the reason I'm leaning towards three is I'd like to get a representative of this district here to make a choi, to, maybe it makes sense to have a tower there. I mean, I'll be honest, I've never been to your neighborhood, so how can I make a decision about where the tower should go? That's so, how I feel. So that's, I think that would be my preference, is not to, not to deny the major use permit today, because maybe it does make sense, but I don't think, I don't feel comfortable making a decision about a process that is set up to require discretionary review, which is why the other towers are 300 feet, because they're ministerial, and this one is designed to have discretion built into the process when we don't have a representative for the neighborhood.
I, I am going to make a second to the motion, so that at least there's a vote at this time.
But I think if it fails, it's going to be...
Okay.
What if we were to delay until after the next meeting, which we hopefully have some representative from District One there? But I guess I heard, or initially though, we had to do it within a certain time period. And, so I, I don't know, what, what's the ramifications of extending that, of going over that time period? Does then it just default to whatever the planning commission's decision was?
No, it would not default to whatever the planning commission's decision was if this, if the, the hearing goes over. What our code provides is that the hearing must be held within 120 days. So what we've opined and what's written in the board letter is if this board has particular questions, I think, or clarity that it needs to get from staff, it can, it can ask staff for that information, ask for the item to be returned to this board. And that's, there's a slight difference between that and simply continuing the item until one is seated.
Okay.
Okay. I think that, I would like to make a substitute motion to go with option three, unless you want to withdraw your motion or change your motion, Jim. I'm sorry, Supervisor Desmond. Okay. Supervisor Desmond's drawn his motion. I'll make a motion to continue appeal and send the major use permit back to staff for additional environmental analysis and/or reconsideration, including initial, any additional direction from the board and return to the board. I mean, I don't know, it could be...
August.
Yeah, it could be, I mean, August. I mean, at least our poor new supervisor gets one meeting to figure out what's going on.
We don't have a land use meeting until...
Yeah, August 26th or 28th, or whatever that meeting is. Yeah.
Vice chair, if we may, staff has a question or request to perhaps return that in September if amenable to the board based on some procedural issues.
That's fine.
If it were to be September, that would give us an opportunity as well to bring it back to the local planning group if, to see if they would like to take another vote as they ended in six-six. When we return, we could also provide some information on the volume of permits that we're processing for large and small. For example, large-scale cell permits, we're seeing 20 to 30 a year go forward to our planning commission and get approved with the current setbacks. We could include information on the volume of small cell wireless as well, just for, for better awareness on the, the permit volume that we're doing under each.
I think that would be very helpful, and also whether there's like a feasible, reasonable alternative that would be amenable to AT&amp;T, because I think that would be great if there was some other location that was a little bit farther away, because we obviously need the cell tower. It's important, but maybe not next to the people's houses. So that would be very helpful if AT&amp;T had an alternative location that could be amenable.
Just to note for the record, we only have one land use meeting in September, and that is September 10th.
Okay, so that would be September 10th. So that would be my motion.
I, I will second if Joel is on here, which is totally fine, but if that's not the case, I'll second. Okay.
Yeah, I withdrew that one, it came back on there, so if you'd like to second it, Supervisor.
Okay, all right, okay. So I will, I will second the motion, and if I could just have some remarks before we vote. I, I do know the area very well. I know that service is needed in the area. I know that the cell tower, just generally speaking, is very, very important. I have, I have expressed my concerns and hopefully made them clear. I'm looking forward to the information that is coming back. And I think, I appreciate the breakdown, because I was also, I also misunderstood what was originally told to us about the role of the federal government or a federal agency. But I appreciate the breakdown of the ministerial process versus a discretionary, I think that's the term I want to use, process. I would just say, the, the purpose of that discretionary process is the appeal process. So that is the reason why we're having this conversation right now. And I, I don't think that it generally makes sense to have, outside of understanding that the setback requirements and other requirements are different because it's ministerial and it does not have this process, totally understand that, but just common sense would tell us that there's a reason why there's a larger setback, that, that setback on the smaller projects, we should look at that and determine what that looks like for larger projects, just generally speaking, even if it's just guidance. You know, because right now, this does, it doesn't make common sense that we're allowing for a project of this size to be very close to homes when a smaller project, although it wouldn't have to go through this process, would have a larger setback. It just doesn't, legally, I totally get it, but from a common sense perspective, it doesn't make sense. So just, I guess we'll put that in the queue and we'll, we'll look at that further as we kind of update our zoning laws. But appreciate the conversation here and the public for coming out, and also AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T for providing the service. Like I said, I live in the area. It's needed. I know that for sure.
Supervisor Desmond, did you have a last comment?
No, just...
Okay. Yeah, I also really want to thank AT&amp;T, and I feel like, you know, very supportive of more, more cell tower coverage, and I think this is, must be very frustrating. You guys have done everything you were supposed to do, but the system does not, is not designed properly. And I wanted to, you know, really just thank our community members. I acknowledge how opaque all of this is, like, like, what, we're very far away. What does the board have to do with your planning commission and your planning group? Y'all did an amazing job figuring out how to get here and raise your appeal. I'm serious. So just thank you for, for making the effort, and we are hearing you, and I don't know what the outcome will be, but at least we can try to have a fair process. So, and I'm so sorry to AT&amp;T that this was, you guys have done everything you were supposed to do. So all in all, this is not good, and we do need to figure out, kind of moving forward, better, better, like, zoning requirements about setbacks so that this doesn't happen again. So, okay, we had a motion on the floor and a second, please vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We, what? We're all done, we're finished with non-agenda? Okay, well then, that concludes the meeting before the board. This meeting is adjourned.
The next regular meeting of the board will take place on July 22nd, 2025.